Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Brozkin?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Rousen? Will not be here tonight, I'm sorry.
Stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Brozkin? Before we begin, just notice that the number of the microphones are behind the computers and that will not pick up. Won't be for the person who has to do the minutes.
I did do it.
So we've seen no special reports. Next agenda approval of minutes, Peters Township Council meeting held on July 8th, 2024.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Audience comments limited to five minutes for non-agenda items. Yes, sir.
Write your name on that piece of paper before Mr. Lauer tells you to.
My name is John Nab. I live at 112 Kimber Drive, directly behind the Market District Express with my wife. When the Market District Express was being planned in 2012, the township planning department sought input from nearby residents. As a result, one of the restrictions placed on Giant Eagle was that Giant Eagle will not be permitted to use outside speakers for music, advertisement, et cetera. In 2014, Giant Eagle submitted a request to permit to play acoustical live music outdoors on weekends from June through September on the outdoor patio located on the side of the building. Nearby residents were informed by a letter from the township planning office that this issue would be addressed at council meeting in June 2014. Considerable discussion was held at that meeting and input by many of the neighboring residents all spoke against the approval of live outdoor music. Council turned down the Giant Eagle request. Now, 10 years later, this past May, Giant Eagle began playing amplified music outdoor on the patio on Friday nights. On June 3rd, I personally went to the township office to obtain a copy of the meeting minutes from June 23rd, 2014. A copy of those is provided to you. The yellow page has the comments from the residents as well as Giant Eagle. The comments from the residents contained in those minutes are still pertinent today. I discussed the neighborhood's concerns with the planning department as the staff has had recent turnover and was not aware of the issues. I also provided via email documentation of the original development of the site operating requirements. The township stated in an email, and I quote, "Thanks for bringing these issues to our attention and providing documentation. I will keep you in the loop as we address the issues and no more." As of June 3rd, there had been no change to the 2014 denial of approval for outdoor music. On Friday, July 12th, my wife and I were sitting on our porch. Giant Eagle commenced playing outdoor music to the level that we could not carry a reasonable conversation without raising our voices. I went down to the patio and observed a singer with an electric keyboard and the amplifiers and speakers in use. It was after township working hours, so I left a phone message for the planning department. I received a return call on Monday, July 15th. In that phone call, I was informed that an application had been presented at council meeting on June 24th, recommended for approval of my Mr. Lauer and approved by a vote of four to zero. I was then provided a copy of the meeting minutes via email. I have spoken with a number of the neighbors affected by this action. Three or more are here tonight. None of us were informed that this issue would be discussed at the council meeting. I was very shocked and disappointed in the township for not informing the residents and when I had been told that I would be kept in the loop, this issue was, when this issue was addressed. The residents bordering the Market District Express and Getco already deal with a lot of noise from the daily operations of the business. Outdoor playing of music is not a necessity or an activity that we want to see. I ask, what has now changed? Why does Giant Eagle need to have outdoor music? Giant Eagle's not an entertainment venue. They are a convenience slash grocery store, a pharmacy, and a gas station. Does this township really want to set the precedent that businesses will be permitted to have outdoor music that affects neighboring residents? Two doors down from Getco is Pizzazz Restaurant. In the past, there have been issues with Pizzazz propping open their back door while loud music was being played, and residents have actually been awakened in late, at the late hours. If Giant Eagle's permitted to have live outdoor music, how long until Pizzazz and other businesses in the township seek approval? Do you really want to open that Pandora's box? I would also mention that on July 12th, when Giant Eagle played music outdoors, it was not even in accordance with the special permanent permit that was granted on, in June. The minutes from last month's meeting state acoustic music performances, guitar or piano. The music consisted of an electric keyboard and singing with amplification. I have a very short video of that if you ever want to see it. The music, I can, included this information when I spoke to the planning department on July 15th. I asked that the council relook at this issue and revoke the approval from the June council meeting, thereby restoring the requirements that have been in place for the past 12 years. Giant Eagle has demonstrated that they are willing to violate the conditions of acoustic music and instead of electron, and instead have electronic instruments and amplification. We do not understand the need for outdoor music when they have significantly more seating inside the store. On July 19th, after being reminded by township of the conditions of acoustic music for outdoors, Giant Eagle set up the music which featured an electric keyboard inside their building, which did not disturb the neighborhood. And there are three other of my neighbors, we all border property with Giant Eagle.
Gentlemen, you want to stand up then, you want to say anything?
Yeah. Do I need to sign?
Yes, please. Thank you, sir, for your company.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys, for giving us the minutes. My name's Jim Sessir. I live at 100 Kimber. I'm on the very first house, actually on the lowest part of anybody who should be really raising their voice is probably me because I get more noise than anybody else, okay? I'm here to support John and Bunny because they are my neighbors. I don't hear the music as loud because it beats up their way, not so much down our way. My question to you would be, who's responsible for bringing this to Giant Eagle? The trucks that idle at 5:00 in the morning, the pumping trucks that are removing the grease at 5:00 in the morning? I've sent an email. One of the ladies who was in administration did respond back to me and told me that it's not your responsible, or it's not your responsibility. The things that Giant Eagle are doing are approved by, by commercial laws, rules in place in our township. So my question to you is, who's responsible for sharing our voice? Is it you, or do we have to get on and talk to management every time that something's happening? So my last question would be to council is, do the letters that come out when a commercial facility such as Giant Eagle wants to have an approval for something, is it a courtesy that we get a letter, or is that mandated by the township? So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Paul?
On special permits, is it, you know, those have been considered by council. Generally, we are not notifying, as we do when we have a change in zoning or a plan come in. That's not what we've done.
Was there an original condition of this plan, though, that they not use that?
Well, if you recollect, prior to Giant Eagle being there, what was there was a car dealership. And there was a problem with the car dealership because they had outside speakers and it was an annoyance in the community so that when the plan came in, the residents, one of their concerns was that you not be playing music or announcing telephone calls as they did with the car dealership. So, I don't know, when you go to certain places to fill up, you'll find that they're playing music or they're playing TVs, and that was one of the prohibitions against constantly playing that kind of music. And that's what, what they're referring to in terms of that restriction.
But when the action was taken, excuse me for losing track of the year, it was to be acoustic music. That was certainly the concept that I was responding to.
Yeah, and the, and you had three people here from Giant Eagle at the meeting, and the music that was to be played was strictly to be acoustic music. You know, I stopped last Friday to see what was happening in preparation for tonight's meeting, and as indicated, there was a electronic keyboard and they were indoors. I had a chance to talk to the manager and explain to him that that would not be acceptable outside, and he understood that. I don't doubt what, what the residents are saying here in terms of that having been used in an outdoor setting. Quite frankly, that's in violation of the special permit, so.
So that the special permit was just no amplification, just acoustic instruments?
Yes.
So, so you talked to them, I, I.
I mean, you know, council can, if they want, revoke that special permit on that.
The week prior, if I may, the week prior, they did have that set up outside.
Well, we got that from.
Okay.
My question would be, who would police them to make, they've proven, and in May, they had no approval, and they, at least two Friday nights, they were playing very loud music with amplification and with electronic keyboard, all coming across speakers.
So, a couple of questions. Sure. And comment, when I voted yes for this, before I thought at the meeting that this has, had been going on in years past, but incorrect in that this is the first year it's happened, or?
There was a request for this years ago, but as was indicated, it was many years ago.
Right, so, so last summer, were they doing this?
No.
No, so this was the first?
If I may, as a resident there, they have.
Can you do, you have to speak for the microphone, otherwise.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
As a resident there, and like I said, I'm on the lower end, so I get to hear everything that happens down there. They have actually in the past snuck some people down in there with instruments, so even without the permit.
Without the permit, right.
And not that I'm knocking them, I approve Giant Eagle over the car dealership, trust me.
But this is the first time council has approved a special permit for this?
At that location.
And it sounds like they're already in violation. Just curiosity, how many people were there when they're playing this music? Is there one person there, or there are 20 people?
Two, buddy. When I went down and filmed it, there was nobody but the woman who was playing and singing.
Yeah.
And they have two to three times as much seating indoors.
How long is the permit good for?
I think it's through October, was it?
Yeah, I think that's right.
I don't remember that part, because I thought it was kind of long. And I have recollections, whether it was before the permit was actually granted this year, that there was an acoustic group there that I found acceptable, not realizing one way or the other where the status of this permit was. Am I improperly recalling at least one occasion?
At least the last two Fridays in May, they were playing, just like I recorded, the electronic keyboard and singing coming over loud speakers. The first Friday, I heard it, we were leaving and I didn't contact township. The next Friday, they did it, that was the, the end of May, and I contacted the township on the 3rd of June. And that was when I was also told that, you know, as this, we'll, we'll investigate, I gave them additional information, and I was told, I'll be kept in, in the loop. And so I was really shocked when I found out in July here, when they're playing the music, and I come and call and try and find out what's going on, and I get told that it had been approved at a June board meeting. So we were left out of the loop, and I understand it's a courtesy, which Mr. Silvestri actually personally made sure we were informed when they asked for music the first time. But in this case, it wasn't just a courtesy. We were told, I was told, that we would be kept in the loop and no, no information was provided that it was going to be at the June board meeting. So I admit, I am very disappointed with the township.
Well, obviously, they're violating the permit at this point, or at least they have once. I don't know that.
More than once.
Well, I don't know that that's enough for us to pull it at this point, at least. I don't know. I think at a minimum, we should send them a warning and say if it happens again, the permit goes.
And then, you know, Mr. Nab brings up a good question, who is, who is policing this?
Well, it's, it's, will always be the township staff who's policing it. I mean, and, you know, and it's like a lot of things, you know, the reason why I was there last Friday was there was a complaint, so we went to check out that complaint.
What times, what time do they do it?
They're, they're there from, supposedly from 4:00 to 8:00 is what the permit is for.
One evening?
On Fridays.
Friday evenings.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Kevin Hoffman. I live at 116 Kimber Drive. I'm probably behind the car wash of the Giant Eagle.
Okay.
The amplification rolls right up the hill, and the artist and musician has to overcome the Route 19 traffic, so it, it makes it louder. I mean, the artist plays to the people in front of them that don't worry about the people behind them. And I can't, you know, agree more with, they have an acoustic room inside their place. That solves all the problems. Play their music inside their own establishment, and that doesn't harm anyone. But when they open up the doors, you know, we can't turn it down, change the channel, or shut it off. So I just asked the council to look at this issue, give us a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Like I said, that's what I think we should do. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I.
I agree.
If this were a multi-year thing, but this is apparently the first year that this series has been going on for a while, so there may be some growing pains, maybe I'm giving Giant Eagle too much of the benefit of the doubt, but I think if we send them a warning, say if it happens again, we're going to pull your permit, then we, you know, they won't be able to argue with us if this happens again and we.
And I think the letter reinforces the limitations on the permit. It's acoustic, I suppose.
Make it clear that if it happens again, it's, they're done.
Now, did the permit, does the permit allow them to have this outside?
If the permit's only needed because it's outside, if it was indoors, it's not needed.
So that letter will be sent?
Yep.
You know, you know, we don't get a lot of requests for these, so it might not be a bad idea in the future going forward if some other business wants to do something like this, that we perhaps make some kind of attempt to notify. I might say it's 600 feet from the property line, like, you know, like a zoning matter, but someone, like, right behind their houses, I mean, they should at least be notified.
The thing that, and this is not a problem, but the thing it's going to do is, a lot of these special permits come in, in late. They come in close to when council's having a meeting. We're going to have to establish some rules about timing on these because, you know, to send out notices and get responses back is going to take a little bit of effort, and, but it may slow things down on that regard. But that's okay, we can work that out.
My name's Anita Nab. I live at 112 Kimber Drive. I just have one, one thing, a couple of things to say. One, we're less than a football field away from this music, so I think you all understand that, that it's not a nice thing. The one thing I request, if you're not willing to revoke the permit because they have violated it at least once and probably two to three times, would you amend it to add the, the words "non-amplified acoustic music"?
Is that, is that in there, Paul? I thought it was.
No, it's not. It's strictly acoustic music. Well, if you throw a microphone and speakers onto a piano and guitar and singers and amplify that around, you've pretty much negated the amp, the acoustic.
And that was my discussion with the manager at Giant Eagle. You cannot have, as the way I read that permit right now, you cannot put a mic on the guitar and amplify the acoustic guitar. The same thing with the electronic keyboard, you know, it talks about a piano, it doesn't talk about an electronic keyboard. That's not permitted.
If that's your understanding, then there's, you, there should be no problem adding the word "non-amplified" to the permit, and that would avoid any argument from Giant Eagle.
You just have to tell me whether that includes voices, because that I don't.
I, I think it should, no, there should be anything. You're going to play, you play. If you're going to sing, you're going to sing. It should not be amplified at all, period.
And I don't think we need to amend it, I think that's our interpretation of what was granted.
I would just put that in the letter, that that's what we authorized, and if it happens again.
All right, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other audience comments, non-agenda items? Very good. Seeing no unfinished business, new business, award of contract highway line painting through South Hills areas, South Hills area council, government, Shake Hog Purchasing Alliance program.
So the 2024 Peters Township Highway Maintenance Budget includes an appropriation of $40,000. These funds are earmarked in part to offset the cost of the township's annual highway line painting program. Bids were received through the Shake Hog Purchasing Alliance on March 7th, 2024. This year's line painting contract is estimated to cost $31,560, and so therefore requires council to take action to award the contract. The low bidder is Alpha Space Control, and they've been doing our line painting program since 2006, and we have found them to be a reliable contractor. I recommend then that the Peters Township Council award a unit price contract with an estimated value of $31,560 to Alpha Space Control.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of the bid for a cure and place storm sewer lining project.
The 2024 Peters Township budget includes an appropriation of $2,805,000 for road and storm water management improvement projects, of which $2,331,569 is currently committed. The remaining available funds are $473,432. The bids to rehabilitate the deteriorated corrugated metal pipe system along Sylvania Drive, Fuchinic Street, and Demo Drive are opened on July 12th. Three firms submitted bids, those are up on the screen. Insight Pipe Contracting was the low bidder. Insight Pipe has performed many line projects for the township over the past several years, and it's my recommendation that council award a contract Insight Pipe Contracting amount of $156,997.50.
So, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, agenda approved Pleasant Point preliminary development plan, as shown on draw and prepared by J.R. Gales dated June 28, 2024 for Andrew J. and Amy Zeholsky.
So we'd like to start by having Mark go through and, for council, and give you a general summary of what's being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Lauer. As you see before you, we have the Zeholsky Land Development, also known as Pleasant Point. This was a plan, a land development plan that was submitted originally on April 19th for 88 townhomes on a, on what is now a recently reconfigured parcel totaling roughly 19 acres. It included an extension of two existing residential streets, and more recently, it has been revised to reduce the number of dwellings down to 53 total units. In terms of some background on the site, it's important to note that the property is currently zoned low-density residential, which is your half-acre single-family minimum. However, prior to that, it was zoned mixed residential overlay and wasn't rezoned unto, to this low-density designation until April 22nd, meaning that since this plan was submitted prior to that date, it will have to be reviewed under the mixed residential overlay residential district. Couple other important things to point out, the special exception, there was a special exception approved for the site adjoining the parcel in question here, and that was for a, the western area to be developed as what we call a group living facility type B. And more recently, in May, the plan that you see, or the previous version of the plan for the 88 townhomes was denied by the Planning Commission. Now, taking a look at the existing site as we see it today, the area in question is, is highlighted in green here. As I noted earlier, there was a recent lot reconfiguration which realigned this line here to now coincide with the green outline here. It's a little bit hard to see, but this is now the new property in question. I'll also point out there are five additional single-family lots located here along East McMurray Road. Those are part of a previous subdivision approved in the 1950s. The use of the lot currently is largely vacant. It does include one existing single-family home. Surrounding the site, we have mostly low-density residential on the, the eastern side to the north, and it circles around here to the west. On the opposite side of East McMurray, down in this area, you have a mix of different types of uses, including residential, multifamily, institutional, and commercial uses. Now, access into the site is provided by a couple of different ways. We have some existing streets with, which dead-end into the development parcel, Marion Drive here on the east, Pleasant and Crest here in the north, and, and on the south here, it borders East McMurray Road. I'll also point out that on this existing parcel here, the one that I noted that had the special exception, there is a potential to connect into that site for an interconnection between the two parcels. Most of the site itself is fairly either steep or has moderate slopes, and there is a drainage way that runs on the western side of the site here. And in terms of the proposed development, as I previously noted, initially, it was 88 townhomes. That has now been changed to 53 dwellings. I should correct that here, this should actually be dwellings, not townhomes. But those 53 dwellings include 38 duplexes and 15 townhome units. It also includes the extension of Marion Drive coming in from the, the east here, running west to the adjoining parcel, and then Pleasant Avenue is proposed to continue south down connecting with, oops, sorry, East McMurray Road here, directly across from the middle school entrance. There are two stormwater facilities proposed, one, the largest one, located here in the south, and then a smaller one located just behind this single-family lot right there. I'll also point out that all utilities are proposed to be underground, and at the moment, this is proposed to be a single-phase development.
So, under the provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, Peters Township is required to approve or deny an application for preliminary plan within 90 days as measured from the date of the Planning Commission meeting falling to middle of the application. In this case, the 90-day clock started on May 9th, 2024, with a deadline for action by Peters Township Council as of August 7th, 2024. Peters Township Council's last meeting prior to that date is today, so council must act on this application at this meeting. And would I be correct, Mr. Lauer, that if we do not act on it, it would be deemed approved, correct? Yep, that would be correct if we went past the date of, of August 7th. On April 22nd, Peters Township Council took action on an ordinance altering the township's zoning map by removing parcels located in the vicinity of 265 East McMurray Road from the mixed residential overlay zoning district. This change left in place the underlying zoning that the property is low-density residential. On April 19th, prior to council's adoption of the ordinance, Mr. Zeholsky submitted a plan to develop the property under the mixed residential overlay zoning district regulations. The land development plan was determined to be administratively complete. The township under the Pennsylvania state law is required to review and consider this plan based upon the zoning district classification in place at the time of the application, and therefore, this plan has been reviewed under the mixed residential overlay zoning regulations. The April 19th plan, when submitted, depicted the construction of 88 townhomes. Review of the application was completed by Gateway Engineers, Traffic Planning and Design, the Peters Township Sanitary Authority, and the Peters Township Planning Department. Mr. Zeholsky was, was provided the results. Mr. Zeholsky was, was provided the results of that review by May 3rd, 2024. On May 9th, 2024, the Peters Township Planning Commission recommended that council deny approval of the Pleasant Point land development. They did so on the basis that the plan failed to comply with numerous provisions of the regulations associated with the mixed residential overlay zoning district. The rationale for the Planning Commission decisions were conveyed to Mr. Zeholsky in a letter dated May 13th, 2024, and that letter was included in your docket. At the May 9th Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Zeholsky stated, "I was forced to rush a premature plan just to get it grandfathered in." Later in that meeting, he stated that while we, we submitted this one, after hearing all the comments about density, "I am now trying to consolidate several of these instead of four townhomes into two patio homes." The rushed nature of the plan is evidenced in the original submittals on April 19th, as well as the revised submittals on July 1st, July 8th, and July 15th. If, Mr. Zeholsky significantly altered the plan based upon the denial of the Planning Commission. A revised plan was submitted on July 1st, while other revised plans were submitted on July 8th, the revised plan depicting 38 duplex homes and 11 townhouses. The current plan submitted on July 15th before council tonight depicts 38 duplex homes and 15 townhouses. The plan currently includes connections to Pleasant Avenue, Crest, and Marion Drives, the adjacent properties to the east, as well as East McMurray. It does not, however, depict traffic improvements on East McMurray Road. In a letter to Mr. Zeholsky dated May 13th, 2024, Mr. Holdren stated, "A decision of this plan must be made by August 7th, 2024. As such, a revised plan addressing these and any other outstanding issues must be considered by the Peters Township Council meeting scheduled for July 22nd. You may submit a revised plan to be considered at the council meeting prior to that date. However, please keep in mind that, given the number and extent of issues this plan presents to the Planning Commission, the township will require any revised plans and supporting materials to be submitted at least three weeks prior to council meeting in order to be placed on the agenda." Because these, these drawings were rushed, simple things have been missed or are unclear. The latest revision fails to show a temporary cul-de-sac. So at the top of the plan, there, on this latest revision, there were four townhouses added. A requirement of the plan would be that there be a temporary cul-de-sac so that, in fact, you could service that road for snow removal, garbage collection, or, or, or any other thing involving large trucks. That doesn't exist on this plan as it's been submitted today.
Is there a cul-de-sac right below that red circle?
That cul-de-sac is on a neighboring property. That cul-de-sac does not exist and cannot be used to satisfy that requirement.
So you're saying if there was a cul-de-sac, it would have to be where those townhouses are?
It would have to be within, in the parcel. Can I, can I do this? Can I finish, and then, then council's gonna take comments from residents? There, there are drafting errors. The drawing references lot lines and right-of-ways that are intended to be vacated. So on the bottom of the property, bottom of this drawing, where I have this circled, that outline, which is a line that's in, in the drawing, is the outline of the five lots that are being, being dissolved. That lot, that lot line should not be shown on this drawing. There's also, on the plan that, that most recently that I have seen, are notations that refer to private right-of-ways, and those, those should not be on this drawing. And then finally, and I don't, maybe this is what's intended, but it, but I find it to be confusing, and I don't understand what the, the intention is. If you look at the drawing, there, there are a several, every one of these structures is on its own individual lot. So, for illustration purposes, I, I outlined three of those, those lots. But on those lots are individual structures. So, that circle depicts where there is a duplex on a single lot. So I'm not quite sure how the ownership of that duplex occurs if, in fact, it sits on a shared lot. Normally, what we would expect to see is a condominium development where there is common open space across all structures, as opposed to what you see here where you have a individual lot that has a multifamily structure being built on it. And that's true not only of the duplexes, but that's the way the townhouses are depicted. So you can have four and five, five buildings on a separate lot. So I'm not quite sure what the intention of that was, but it, it's certainly something that would need to be explained. Beyond this, many of the substantive issues raised in every iteration the drawings are left unaddressed. We have Josh Skindlin from Gateway Engineers here tonight. Gateway is one of the outside groups that does reviews plans for us, and I was gonna ask Josh if he could go through what is in Gateway's report. And Josh, you have to sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Lauer. Good evening. So, to summarize our letter dated July 12th, 2024, a handful of comments still remain relative to geotechnical comments, slope stability of the site. Essentially, we're requesting additional information from the applicant to confirm that the slopes presented in the plan are going to be stable for this type of development.
And when did you request that information?
Uh, we requested that in all of our letters thus far.
So you requested it multiple times?
Multiple times, yes.
All right.
Josh, you know when the first time you would have requested it?
April 29th, 2024. And then, in our letter, in July 12th, 2024.
Thanks.
Those, those comments still remain in the plan. Those have yet to be addressed. From a stormwater management perspective, we are requesting, in accordance with the preliminary plan requirements, we are requesting a stormwater management report to confirm that the methodology of the stormwater being provided is adequate and complies with the township ordinance. A version of that stormwater report was provided, and we provided comments in our July 12th, 2024 letter. Essentially, there wasn't enough information in that report to confirm if it meant the intent of the ordinance. So those stormwater management comments still remain. Additionally, an erosion and sediment control report was requested as well. That is to ensure that the plan as proposed is compliant with Peters Township ordinances and ensure the proper phasing is, or the proper implementation of BMPs is achieved through this plan, just due to the steep slopes and the, and the topography of the site. That is a high-level review of, of the comment letter that we have on file.
And I think, you know, in discussions with, with Josh, the, the thing that's important to note is that based upon the information that may be contained in the geotechnical information, it may cause this plan to be completely reconfigured from its current design, and there's no way to know that until adequate geotechnical information is provided to the township. You know, the other thing about it is that, quite frankly, it would be irresponsible to approve a land development plan without complete and thorough geotechnical analysis. The results could be catastrophic for future homeowners, and it'd be catastrophic for the township, and you only have to look nearby to understand what the implications of a failure in terms of design and implementation with regard to earth movement. So, you know, you know, from that perspective, it would be difficult to be able to recommend the approval of the plan based upon that. Any questions for Josh?
Well, you didn't mention the expansive soil, the carbonaceous shale that was itemized in the recap that we have here.
Yeah, and the, and the nature of that comment is to provide additional information on how that would be managed and mitigated if it, if it were to.
Well, how prevalent is it? Because that could play havoc with all sorts of elements of development.
Sure, and that's what we're requesting additional information on, is how that would be handled and what the implications are for the plan.
I don't, do you know where Boring Nine is in this plan?
Uh, I, I don't know off the.
And I can't find it here on the little screen that I'm looking at either, but. All right, I mean, that's, to me, a very significant component of.
The slope stability comments are significant as well.
I can't tell you how many properties I've been involved in with significant building problems with expansive soils, so.
Well, it seems that there's no question that what we have here is an incomplete plan.
But, but if I could, please, go ahead and.
Chance to conclude, thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
In the Traffic Planning and Design Review Letter dated July 8th, 2024, there are several significant concerns. These include, the Township's code of ordinance requires a street circulation plan that provides for safe and convenient access but discourages fast or heavy traffic. Pleasant Avenue is currently laid out from Crest Drive to McMurray Road does not meet the intent of that section of the ordinance. The traffic impact study indicates that during peak, during PM peak hours, over 200 vehicles per hour of non-Pleasant Point-related traffic could be diverted between Route 19 and McMurray Road via Pleasant Avenue. This level of potential country traffic in this development should be mitigated by changes in the layout of the street network and/or inclusion of significant traffic calming measures. No traffic calming measures as outlined in our current, current code of ordinance have been incorporated. Previous studies of this site have indicated that turning lanes and a traffic signal be required on, on East McMurray Road. I would note that the May 9th Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Zeholsky stated that I now agree that having to signalize intersection is the way to go. The current plan, however, fails to show that. And then finally, I guess, Mr. Holdren to go through the review that he did.
So, from a Township code, the saldo in zoning analysis, you know, I looked at what was required versus what they were showing here, and there are a number of deficiencies that you can see. Part of the thing, the requirements of the mixed residential overlay district is that there is a front setback, and it's actually a range of 25 to 30 feet. So 30 is actually being the maximum in terms of the distance you can be from, the distance from the, the public right-of-way. And we do have at least one unit that's greater than 30 feet. We also had some issue determining the building height. We were provided with some build, architectural renderings as required. However, we're unsure if we can use them as to whether or not the applicant actually has permission to use those renderings, so we can't use them then to determine whether or not the buildings meet the required maximum height. We also have a maximum lot coverage of, I believe that's 50%. Right now, that has not been calculated out, and so we're not sure if that meets the ordinance itself. And then there's a number of issues with the minimum open space set aside, mostly in the fact that there's a lack of detail. There's, they don't show any amenities. The ordinance just claims it's gonna be left in its natural state, and, or the plans state that. And the ordinance, on the other hand, actually states that it should be a main focal point of the community itself. In addition to that, in terms of parking, up until very recently, we did not have any renderings for duplexes. We did get some renderings for the duplexes, which we could potentially determine the number of parking spaces required. The only thing I'll point out again is I'm not sure if those are gonna be the ones that are intended to be built on sites, I'm not sure if they have permission to use those. And then again, getting into the design standards, a lot of that is based on not being able to be determined because of the type of architectural rendering we received. Again, we're not sure if they're, the applicant has permission to use those. In regards to transportation analysis, there were some very specific items that the ordinance calls for. Most notably that there needs to be some type of traffic calming, which we did not see on the plans. There's traffic improvements that are required per the traffic impact statement. They were not shown on the plans itself. There's also something called a minimum connectivity index, which should be at least 1.4. In this case, the development is only 1.33, and that just has to do with the number of nodes or intersections within a development. And also in terms of the design speed of the proposed roads, they are supposed to be at least 25 miles per hour. In this case, what you're seeing here is one, roads that are designed to only 20 miles per hour.
And then finally, the, the, the plan doesn't show the utility easement locations throughout. The comments of, in the letter from the Peters Township Sanitary Authority dated April 22nd, 2024, remain unaddressed. The developer has not submitted the current preliminary plan for review by the Peters Township Sanitary Authority as required, nor paid the required fee for review. And it's for these reasons enumerated in my, in the manager's report, the letters from Gateway Engineer dated July 12th, Traffic Planning and Design dated July 8th, the Peters Township Sanitary Authority dated April 22nd, and Mark Holdren's dated July 12th. It is my recommendation to Peters Township Council to deny the Pleasant Point Preliminary Development Plan as shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gales for Andrew and Amy Zeholsky.
Based upon what you said, Mr. Lauer, with Mr. Holdren has said, seems we have an incomplete plan here. We have to act on it tonight. I don't see that we have any choice but to deny the plan because the plan is deficient in so many, so many areas that we can't even begin to pick it apart. So I will make a motion that we.
Any, any space for comments, sir?
Go ahead.
I'm Andrew Zeholsky, I am the property owner. I, I will point out that there is one other potential option, which was, at the time that the Planning Commission forwarded to a recommendation for non-approval, I did also request a potential extension of time on this plan. They also voted to reject that extension, but it's my understanding that they are a recommending body, not a deciding body. So you do also have the option to grant me an extension to deal with some of these issues. I, I would like to talk a little bit about timing. And, and just, you know, a little bit of my history with the township. Again, I was a Peters Township resident for 13 years. I now still live locally, I don't live in the township, but I still live locally. And during that time, I had purchased several properties within the township. Most of them, again, under the time when Ed Zook was Township Planning Commissioner, Director of the Planning Department, and around the time that the township itself had enacted its 10-year comprehensive plan, and I had attempted to specifically work with the township. I've always attempted to specifically work with the township to try to bring plans that will benefit the township. Another plan which I'm currently working on, which is currently delayed because of some parking issues that we're still working on, is at the corner of Beavout and Valley Brook. But I do want to point out that. But I do want to point out that my initial submission of a plan for that property was in 2017. And at that time, it was told to me by the Planning Commission, you guys were planning on building a roundabout, and they asked me to please withdraw that plan until PennDOT had finished calculating exactly how much land that they needed so that you guys, you know, so that I wouldn't have built the plan and then there wouldn't be enough land left over, so that I could allow land to go in eminent domain. And I withdrew that plan. PennDOT came back with a plan, I came back with a plan to the township that showed a structure, and then PennDOT got pushed back from the guy who lives across the street, Mr. John Yakka, that he didn't want as much of his trees taken down. So PennDOT asked me to, again, please withdraw my plan so that they could move the roundabout further, and I did that. So, which is why now, what are we, seven years later, I'm still working with this because I have always worked with the township on timing. This plan, again, I entered an agreement with a developer in April of 2020. That developer has presented several versions. Again, he presented an original version that had the 88 townhome units. Township wasn't quite so happy with that plan, so he presented a new plan where, I don't have the lights come on, where these two roads were disjointed so that it would not be a straight shot. The attempt is a calming, a traffic calming measure, but the problem was, they didn't get the 200-feet distance there, and the way it made this road curve, it didn't line up with town. So that plan didn't work. Then in April, in an attempt to figure out a way, because he wasn't getting any buy-in on township support for the traffic light, he presented one concept drawn that showed a lack of connection there, and he justified it based on the fact that, again, we had from 1959, an old plan, that there was a pre-existing subdivision that had not been, that had not been consolidated out. And so we used that as a justification to not make the connection. Township didn't like that plan. Rather than working with me, a guy who has always been trying to work with the township, the immediate decision was to railroad and run this zoning change, the revocation of the mixed residential zoning district. And Mr. Lauer will say that, you know, he asked me, "Are you really planning on selling those separately?" And my response was, "Yes, if I need to, to defend my rights." And then he said, "Well, I'm going to rezon you," and I immediately sent him an email within 24 hours saying, "You know what? Then I don't want, if you're going to get that upset about it," you know, again, I was trying to figure out, okay, you know, do I defend my rights? But, you know, rather than, if the township's going to accept, so within 24 hours, I pulled back from that plan. Nevertheless, this rezoning got put through within, I think it was within 16 days of when that I originally showed, when my developer originally showed that other plan. So yes, I was forced to go back and take the best of the plans we had shown, which was one, the original one that had 88 units, and even though that was not a great plan. And then ever since then, I have been trying again to work with the township to come up with a much better plan that's going to be beneficial to the township. I listened to all of the public comments about the complaints about density. We reduced the density down to 53 units. You know, again, I'm trying to work with traffic calming measures. We created, again, also because of the steepness of the road, but this loop right here, we're putting a 20-mile-an-hour speed limit on it so that, again, we don't get people going up through that. We are completely open-minded to putting, also, sorry, there's going to be stop sign here, stop sign there, it's not really going to be that fast, but we're completely open-minded to putting, you know, if you want speed bumps, whatever other things, but what we did put on our request was some direction from the township, what kind of traffic, other traffic calming measures you would like. I didn't want to put speed bumps on the plan and then have you guys say, "Oh, you know what, those hurt our snowplow, we didn't want speed bumps, we wanted rumble strips." Or, you know, basically, I'm willing to work with the township. The question is, are you guys willing to work with me and give me a little bit more time? You know, it's really strange, you guys cut me off at the ankles and then complain that I'm walking with a limp. I mean, it's hard to do this within the short timeframe, when again, for years, we've been working, trying to work with the township, coming back with plan, you know, with proposal, after proposal, pre-application conference, pre-application, and then you force me to, you know, rush everything through. Couple of the other comments that I would make. In terms, I'm not a geotech person, but my geotech guy has assured me that the last two times that the questions have appeared on the comment letter about slope stability, that he has answered them and that the slopes are stable. In terms of your question about expansive shale, there is no expansive carbonaceous shale. He's answered that twice on the letter. Gateway keeps coming back and says you haven't answered it. That has been answered. In terms of the lack of the, call this off here. Again, I own both sides, we're developing this, you know, as a true connection, there's not going to need, you know, it's going to all be developed at the same time, so although I'm having you to submit the two plans separately, we're developing it all at once. A lot of the other things, again, he mentioned that, okay, one of the townhomes accidentally was more than 30 feet more. Okay, we accidentally have one extra old property line that we're revoking, consolidating away, but we accidentally left, you know, those are, you know, itty-bitty, small-picture things that, yes, we can fix, you know, dot the i's and plus the t's if given more time. Let's look at the big picture, the big picture thing. The big picture is, we are trying to come up with a plan that is going to provide a type of housing unit that would be of benefit to the township. The township does not have, you know, inventory of this type of housing unit for active seniors who want to downsize and retire out of their homes, have, you know, like an over-55-type community of smaller units. These duplexes are based on, if you've ever been on Green Commons Drive in Scott Township, that's where my mother-in-law lives. They're beautiful duplexes, I have some pictures on my phone I can give you. Those are the architectural drawings. I'm working with a guy, Jim Dynard at Centerra Homes. The townhomes were going off based off the model of NVR, who was, who my original developer was working with, when he was proposing the 88 townhomes. We were working with NVR. So we're still going to hire NVR to do the smaller townhomes, we're hiring Centerra Homes to do the duplexes. These are going to be beautiful housing units. Again, we downsized the density to 53 units. If we went with the single-family homes- You guys did a, you know, the way you did that rezoning, again, you guys did a rush because you were just trying to railroad, you shouldn't have liked it on picture, you still left a chunk here of multifamily. So what ends up happening is, I can put like a multifamily apartment on one side, some single-family homes, I'm still going to get basically 29 units versus 53 units. We're talking a difference of density of 24 units. What do we get for that difference of density of 24 units? You get a traffic, a traffic light, again, I have committed that we're going to build that signalized intersection. The traffic warrants the existing condition, in the traffic study that was done, the existing condition already warrants a traffic light with a left-hand turn lane on the westbound going into, into the school. If I don't, if this plan isn't approved and you confine me to the single-family homes, again, there's a pre-existing single-family home there. If I'm forced to utilize those existing single-family homes, I don't put the traffic light in, you guys are on the hook for a lot of money, and or, again, you guys have already now been notified, since it's on file with the township, that traffic study, you guys have been notified of the liability risk. Someone gets into an accident with the school bus, that's on the township. Whereas, again, working together, we can have a really nice situation where, again, I'm, as part of the development, installing that signalized intersection.
So correct me if I'm wrong, if you build on those five houses, on those lots, there'll be no road coming down onto McMurray Road anyway, right?
Right, so if you recall from the consolidation subdivision, again, this is the line, there is currently a private drive that comes, that is already legal, comes up here and comes up here, and the plan is, these five townhomes have to have driveways that go back to the private drive. So again, if the road doesn't exist, instead, you've got traffic of five single-family homes coming down to a driveway here, that's already permanent.
Well, I would correct that.
Is that what-
You have, you have five lots that border on East McMurray Road, they would be entitled to HOPs from PennDOT. There's a 50-foot right of way that goes up into the plan that in essence, it could be used, if I could finish, it could be used as a flag lot. The other thing that I think is important that I correct, because I don't want people to have a misunderstanding, NVR has no interest in this plan right now whatsoever. Kevin Braun, who, Mr. Zalhowski has spoken to, is a developer who is not an employee of NVR, and NVR does not permit their drawings to be used in consideration of this plan.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if Dr. Zalhowski builds on those five lots along East McMurray, their driveways have to come down East McMurray, right? You can't take the driveways up the back and then connect them all and take them down-
I don't know, because there's a, there's a right of way in the back of these properties, and I guess you could do that, but that doesn't mean they don't have a right to access onto East McMurray Road because they front on the road.
Right.
PennDOT would be required to give them an HOP.
So you could either have five driveways onto East McMurray Road from each lot, or you could have one and all-
One that loops around that.
I believe the intention when the plan was approved in 1959 was one consolidated driveway, but I mean, if there's going to be five separate driveways, I mean, that's still not, if the choice is five separate driveways there, plus at least, you know, however many, since there, again, the current plan has this right-of-way easement up here, so at least one other lot, if not more, using that potential as a right of way as well, the impact of traffic on the, if potentially forced to do it as single-family homes would not be as beneficial to the township as going with the plan where we create a road and create a signalized intersection. Like I said, you know, it's a question of, you know, what is your end game here? Do you want something that's going to work well and improve the traffic in front of the school that only requires you giving me time to work with the township, or do you want to just, you know, stick to the exact, you know, letter of what you can get away with and, you know, push this denial through in a way that does not ultimately benefit the township?
Just so you're clear, sir, the council has to make sure this plan complies with the law, with the ordinance. You're asking them to look outside of that, the different issues and different pictures.
No, you know what, applause is not appropriate.
I'm asking them to offer the extension that was not offered at the Planning Commission meeting itself so that we can get everything to comply with the ordinance, comply with law. I have always been willing to work with the township. I, you know, whether I still live here or not, I'm part of this community, I have been since 2002, and, and again, I've worked with other projects as well, there is no reason to force this through unnecessarily. And, you know, again, the other option, either I just go with the single-family development, the other option, again, is because that zoning ordinance was clearly a single property owner targeted in that the properties at, hold on, I have their call numbers. Here they go. The property at 5400100000040 and 540010000036, which are also part of that mixed residential overlay, those weren't targeted, the rezoning was specifically targeted to me, and I realize that you, your advice at the time was that you felt that this did not represent spot zoning, but that would be something to be decided at Commonwealth Court-
Well, I understand, sir.
If need be.
We have been, the council has been removing this overlay throughout the township, so this spot zoning actually arguably would be the other way around when you use an overlay district, not when you go back to the existing zone.
It wasn't spot zoning because, again, you zoned multiple property owners. You only changed the zoning with this ordinance, the zoning change was specific to one property owner specifically because of one image that was presented by a developer, not because of any global, you know, changing-
Well, I disagree, and if you've come to any of the meetings, council over the years has learned that this is not something they want to do, and they've been removing this overlay district throughout the township.
Well, again, at this point, the question is, again, there's a bigger picture here that if given more time, we can get this plan to comply with all the ordinances, I'm working on something that is intended to benefit the township, both in terms of improving traffic flow in front of the school, providing a type of inventory that the township does not have available, providing, you know, a very nice community, not creating a significant more density, you know, again, the difference of 24 units is not a significant more density than what you would get otherwise, and, you know, I'm just asking for time. I have always been willing to give you guys time, I gave you time for the roundabout, it's really only fair that, you know, I'd be giving some extra time, you know, as well.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a point of order. We had a motion that was being appended to the floor, I think we extended courtesy for comments in the middle of that, and that the chair should actually just recognize the motion.
I'll second that.
I don't think that the motion was actually fully made.
No, it was not, but as a courtesy, we allowed it to be disrupted.
All right, well, I'll finish. I'll make a motion that we deny the Pleasant Point preliminary development plan as shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gales dated June 28th, 2024 for Andrew and Amy Zalhowski.
Before that is seconded, I think the applicant had someone here also to testify. Now, he was, sir, you were trying to speaker now.
I would like to, it sounds like they're ready to just-
Well, you know, the opportunity-
That opportunity can continue now that the motion's on the floor.
That's what your procedural was.
Yes.
Just for point of clarification, and your motion is only to deny and not to extend?
Correct.
Yes, so right now I have, excuse me, I have a motion and a second, and I'll open it up, yes, sir, if you want to-
Can I ask Mr. Cozer to clarify what his motion is so that we have the record complete?
My motion is to deny the preliminary plan.
And is that based upon the information of the-
It's based upon the various deficiencies that were stated in the Planning Commission recommendation for denial, as well as those enumerated this evening by Mr. Lauer and Mr. Holder.
Yes, sir.
The motion is to deny, then, my-
Well, they haven't voted on it, it was just a main motion, now it's open for a comment if you want to make-
Now, you're allowed to make comments. I was just trying to get us in order here.
I would just make a very brief comment with, I'm sorry, Josh Hato.
Should be a pen up there, Josh.
David Western.
On the floor, there's one to your left.
Oops. Thank you. You can, guys. You got this for a second. Who's checking in here? Okay. My name's Josh Hato, Western Associates Traffic Consultant. Just in consideration of the idea for an extension, this study was scoped in May, completed on July 1st, so it is still under review by PennDOT. This study addresses a number of things that were brought up today, the improvements at the high school driveway. I understand they're not, they're not shown on plans, those will be designed and permitted with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation after this study is reviewed and approved. So an extension would allow for PennDOT's initial review of this study. So with it being only 21 days since this was submitted, we have not gotten PennDOT's thoughts on this analysis. The study also does discuss traffic calming measures. It was my recommendation to Mr. Zalhowski, there are a number of different options, it was my suggestion, that we sit down, have a conversation with the township staff, their consultants, about what measures would be desirable, because there are several that, many have an upside and a downside. Dr. Zalhowski mentioned speed bumps, yes, they are an effective speed calming measure, but the downside is that sometimes municipalities have difficulties with snow removal. So we simply left it somewhat open-ended, said the applicant is very willing to have that conversation and participate and implement whatever traffic calming measures are- that conversation and participate and implement whatever traffic calming measures are deemed appropriate or desirable by the township. We just wanted to have that discussion. So again, there's nothing shown on that plan because my study just says, we'd like to have more discussion with the township about what would be appropriate. So again, just that an extension, if it's considered, would allow PennDOT's initial review. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from council? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills?
Yes, prior to this evening's meeting, I would give the payroll and bills, find another thing to be in order, and then.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Correspondence letters, we do have an email from James Brown to David Brooks, dated July 10, 2024, concerning parrot head trail maintenance. Also a letter from Mark Matusik to the Peterstown Fire Department concerning response to the fire.
Excuse me, what, are we done with this Zeholsky property?
Yes, sir.
For now? See you again in a couple of weeks.
Third correspondence, notice of violations from Anthony Oscealo, Pennsylvania Department for Environmental Protection of the Peterstown shit.
That's one that we need to speak to.
Well, we'll give a one-minute reprieve here, let the audience dismiss itself quietly. You want to address the correspondence?
Sure. This notice of violation is something that, that I think is important for council to take note of. Under the MS4 program, we are, are required to do improvements on streams throughout the township, and our plan, in essence, requires a project once every five years. We've identified a project, and we've engineered that project, and it's over at the front of Briar Cliff. We anticipate the cost of implementing that to be $1 million. And so this is the first notice from, from DEP asking when that is going to occur, because under the schedule, this should have occurred already. We have been spending our efforts attempting to identify grant funding to help assist with the cost of this project. One of the things that we're going to be discussing this fall as part of the budget discussion is that we may well have to move ahead with this project on our own. You know, the hammer that all state agencies have when, when municipalities fail to comply is to withhold all state funds regardless of whether they're from DEP, PennDOT, the Auditor General's office, and that's a substantial amount of money coming into the township every year, and you cannot afford to have that, that happen. So just letting council know, we're going to have to talk about that, that as part of the budget and talk about a path forward towards actually doing that, that plan.
Yeah, it was, made me nervous when we read that letter.
There's also other substantial expenditures that are on the horizon.
Yes. Well, this is going to be, this is going to be an interesting budget discussion this year because you have a number of projects that are $1 million or more, and we're going to have to figure a course forward. The other thing that's in your correspondence is a letter from Jim Sutter to Brian Middell, dated July 17th, and the reason why, what that letter is, is a notification that the zoning hearing board has approved this variance. I know council took a position with regard to this, and I just wanted to let you know that, in fact, over the objections of council and the adjacent property under the variance was granted.
Follow and appeal, John.
I think so.
Follow and appeal.
Was this the five foot into that farm?
Yeah.
Who was the one that voted against it?
I don't see Ms. Clark.
Yeah.
Who was it?
Ms. Clark voted to deny the variance.
And who voted in favor of it?
I guess everybody.
There's three other members.
Yeah, were they all regular members or were there?
All regular.
They were all regular members?
I believe, but don't vote me on that.
I'm not, I've said it so many times, I'm not going to say it again. I just don't get it. It's like they give away variances like they were candy. I mean, honestly.
You go any other municipality, you can't get them.
You can't get them there.
You can never get them. They're really difficult to get.
I mean, you go down here to Upper St. Clair and try to get one, you know, it's never going to happen.
Yeah. No.
I mean, we have those setbacks in place for a reason, you know, and I gave my die tried on this the last meeting. Anyone watching on TV wants to hear it, go look at the meeting from two weeks ago. I'm not going to say it again, but I think we should appeal it.
But if you're going to do that, it's going to take a motion of council.
I'll make a motion that we appeal.
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Five, nothing, please. Appeal that. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any thinking reports that anyone would like to bring up again? Miscellaneous items?
One miscellaneous item that I have, when we pondered this alternate development of this, there were five single-family residents that you were proposing to have driveways exit onto McMurray Road?
No, what, and this is what Mr. Zeholsky's right about. Mr. Zeholsky came in and showed us a drawing from 1959 where there were five lots that were created on East McMurray Road, and that was presented as a way to create a buffer that would stop them from dropping that plan down onto East McMurray Road. If they were sold off individually, the other part, you couldn't, you couldn't go through there. Those five lots exist as of today. If somebody buys one of those lots, they're going to have a right to a driveway on, on East McMurray.
Even though the, our township does not permit driveways on collective roads.
They'll get a highway occupancy permit, and the lots already exist. It isn't like you're creating those lots.
But that's still PennDOT's discretion, isn't it?
I don't, I, I think if you have a lot on a state road, I think you're entitled to a driveway.
Well, I think you have to, the site distances have to exist.
But they will on there. I mean, in the real estate adjacent to it, there are a bunch of single-family homes.
Yeah. Okay, I, I needed to be set straight with regard to the entitlement.
You would think that even as low density, it doesn't make sense to have those lots facing on East McMurray Road. They're worth a whole lot more if, in fact, there's a road that you're connecting on up the hill.
Okay.
So Thompsonville Road storm sewer, Mr. Lauer?
Do you want to explain this, Mark?
Sure.
We're going to start with the existing problem we have.
Yeah, we, we've had an issue on Thompsonville Road. I don't know if that can be panned out anymore, but if not, to the, to the left of the page, well, let me start to the right of the page is, is the intersection of Thompsonville Bebault and East McMurray. That's the high point of, of the area. Thompsonville, you know, flows down at a pretty decent grade, and it's about 800 feet to our first set of inlets. It doesn't occur until you hit Parkview Lane there, that private road that, that comes off, and we've had drainage problems on that road for years. And I've talked to Public Works about potential storm sewer extensions on that road. We have some springs that pop out on the high side that make icing that we've tied into the underdrain. It's, it's not an ideal situation. So as Paul said, we do have an existing problem on that road. Part two of the conversation is that the Cohen market, you know, obviously has come in for, for approval, and they also have an issue with, they don't have a place to tie in their storm water. They've proposed a level spreader as part of a solution to dissipate their storm water, which is perfectly legal. I, I think we would have to approve it, but the fact of the matter is, it's not ideal for us. So we would like to, to propose some type of arrangement with them to, to extend the storm sewer up to their property line. We've done this for, for private property owners before. Kind of the policy that we've taken here, here in the township is to provide the property owner with a place to dispose of their water, you know, not just dump it on the street to provide a storm sewer to do that. So we're, we're in talks with Cohen market to try to figure out some type of arrangement to bring that storm sewer up.
And what we're proposing is for the township to provide the materials and for Cohen to provide the labor. I think they can install it for, for less expensive than, than we can. We can acquire those materials for cheaper than they can, and I think it'd be a win for both of us, and will not only solve an existing problem, will, you know, this will address what I believe will be a situation that exacerbates that, that problem, so.
Addressing existing and avoid it.
Yeah. So unless council has a problem with that, we'd like to proceed on that basis.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. Thank you.
One other miscellaneous item.
Is that the guy playing over at Signable?
We, we've been approached by.
You should have used that earlier.
It's an acoustic guitar.
This is what we were looking for. What you thought you voted on.
We, we've been approached by someone working with the state of Pennsylvania. They want to do a commercial with Gus, and Gus is going to be in a scene where he is, looks as though he is camping, and what they would like to do is down at Peters Lake and actually probably at the same location that was our, our picture for the front of our budget is to film down there to create the background in which Gus is going to be superimposed on an ad. I think it'd be kind of a neat thing to be able to see an ad that actually shows.
We could get Julianne Moore, but we can get Gus. So that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I was going to tell you.
So Gus himself will not be there, right?
No, Gus won't be there, but there will be a bunch of people filming, so I can't see a problem with this, and I think it's.
Where is it that they're going to be filming?
What's that?
Where is it?
See, where's your, where that white house is there?
Here?
Yeah, up in front of there, up on the lake, right in there, yeah. So they're going to talk to the neighboring property owners as well, so.
Make, make sure they get the dam in the picture. Dam spillway, you know, so that the, for our friends at the DEP can see that it's still there, still holding water back.
The other thing is, I just want to make sure, we had talked to council previously about the school resource officer located in the Washington County Intermediate Unit. I was hoping to actually have that agreement back and signed so it would have been on this agenda. It will be on the next agenda. They've agreed to sign the agreement as submitted to them. We have steps that we need to be taking in terms of hiring and things like that to be able to fulfill that commitment, and that probably will occur before our next meeting. I just want to make sure that council's still on board with signing this agreement because we can't be hiring an officer and, and at the same time, not signing that agreement.
It's the same kind of deal we have with the school.
It's exactly the same.
Absolutely, we should do that. Get somebody that's calm. I want somebody flying off the handle over there.
Have we, you know, we discussed the issue about the people driving with the motorized bikes on the trail. Had another incident this weekend where someone almost got run over, and I also saw them this weekend running through the park as well. We really need to look into doing something about that because someone's going to get hurt, and it's the same thing, it's, you know, boys between the ages of 12 and 16 not wearing helmets, and someone's going to hit a tree or something.
Yeah, boys and girls.
Okay, I've just seen the boys doing it. You're right, I shouldn't be sexist, but I've only seen the boys doing it. You would think girls have more sense, but maybe not.
I did see a kid on my street, he was on one wheel, but he had a helmet on.
So I do want to let council know, I was at a charitable event Sunday and always be smiling in his, you all remember last summer, we went out and, you know, they were asking for some of the property there to build their buildings and the garage, and, and we made an excellent decision by supporting them. They have an amazing complex there, and wish them all the best in their fundraising.
I just got a brochure or something.
Yeah, it's worth taking a walk up.
It was really nice.
So any other next agenda items? If not, motion to.
Executive session.